I pledge the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. I know Sharon's gonna be a little late, she's got a meeting that's gonna run along today, so she'll be here when she gets here, so... Alright, on to the minutes then. Who's gonna read 'em?
I can read 'em.
Okay.
Mayor Peterson opened the public forum regarding the electronic water meter discussion at 6:34 PM. After a question-answer period, the meeting was closed at 6:48 PM. The Horace City Council met on October 2nd, 2017, at 7:00 PM at City Hall. Those present were Corey Peterson, Sharon May, and John Corselman. Brian Schmidt and David Fennelon were absent. The pledge allegiance was recited. Mayor Peterson called the meeting to order. The minutes from September 25th approved by first motion by John and second motion by Sharon. The consent agenda approved by first motion Sharon and second motion by John, all in favor. The regular agenda with additions was approved by first motion by John and second motion by Sharon. Adam Altenberg from MetroCog presented on Cass Clay Food Systems, the activities and bimonthly meetings that take place for this organization. Mayor Corey Peterson agreed that we should do more with this organization and the opportunities that it could bring to Horace, and asked Adam to send more information. Law enforcement report was presented by Jesse Castle. Jesse provided information about the fraud that has been taking place with camper batteries and the phone calls citizens are receiving and suggested ways of preventing these occurrences from happening. Onstead Twitchell, Lucas, presented the public hearing was open at 7:40 PM for the sewer improvement district number 2016-1. The assessment list was approved as provided by Mr. Kroker by first motion from Sharon and second motion by John, all were in favor. The public hearing was closed at 7:43 PM. The public hearing was open at 7:45 PM for the water improvement district number 2016-3. The assessment list was approved as provided by Mr. Kroker by first motion from John and the second motion by Sharon, all were in favor. The public hearing was closed at 7:48 PM. The assessor agreement proposed by Paul Fracassi, Cass County Tax Assessor, and presented by Mr. Kroker with corrections, approved by first motion from John and second motion by Sharon, all in favor. The Cass County Planning Services Agreement was tabled until the next meeting. The first reading of the water rate ordinance with revisions was approved by first motion from Sharon and second motion from John. Interstate Engineering, after discussion and presentation by Andrew Thill, change order number five at Lost River approved by first motion by John and second motion by Sharon, all in favor. Sharon just had a conversation, a conversation was held with Jason Benson regarding construction, the bypass road and etcetera pertaining to the Cass 17 south of Horace. No definite updates have been provided at this time. Conversation was held with Shannon Kiss about the contract about the lights on the ball field, League of Cities takeaway contracting for quality and the different ways that human resource interview processes. Dave and Brian had no report. John went over the tree ordinance, still in discussion phase. Seventy-sixth Avenue roads, traffic study, how to put in what type this needs to be looked at and started. League of Cities takeaway, positive conversations when getting together with other city members is always a bonus and helps make us realize the hiccups are normal. Corey, Auditor Kemmer will get together with the mayor to comprise a letter to the owner of Free Trailer Park. League of Cities takeaway, Governor Burgum went over how a town has an identity, find the identity and be creative. Auditor Vance had no report. After no further business or discussion, the meeting was adjourned at 9:06 PM.
So moved, anybody got any changes or corrections?
Yeah, I have a question on this agreement related to the assessor stuff. Paul, did I hear that right, that we still requested changes to that agreement? Or were we, I thought we had to talk about the agreement was going to be used the one that Paul had originally, that he's given to other cities?
Yeah, well, I think we're gonna use the one that he had given to other cities. We just want them to, in the future.
We want them to, okay.
In the future to consume.
Presenting that.
No, because that's, yeah, okay.
I think that's, I think that's okay, Dave.
Okay.
I just wanted to make sure, that's all.
Yeah, I know there was some discussion on that.
Yeah, we had, we had conversation about it, but we just agreed that we would go with that contract now, but we would encourage that they go to that other contract as we go along here.
Well, that's what our minutes reflect. If there's changes, let us know, and we'll correct it right now.
I'm pretty sure that's what we had talked about.
Okay.
Anybody else got anything? Otherwise, I'll accept the motion to accept.
So moved.
Okay, Dave?
Second.
John does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move along here to the consent agenda.
Okay, any questions on the consent? It's pretty much rubber stamped again. Item number 18, if you'll take a quick look at that. That's a bond issue from back in 2008 that we're working on from a street project. So that, I would ask that you approve that tonight.
Which one was it?
Item number 18.
Oh, okay. This one?
Number 21 is tax commissioner, that was, that's withholding for city employees. Number 22 Midwest Pest Control, we have a stand, I've had a standing contract with them for many, many years. They inspect all our buildings and make sure we're clean as far as rodent damage and that type of thing.
Okay.
Camper construction, I think Jim will speak about that, but that's pay request number three. Item number 24 is that vector control that we sign on every year. It's approximately 10 grand.
So this is basically to pay for the year then, right?
Yes, this is a past year.
This is above and beyond. So again, if you read the contracts, our county taxes cover a certain amount, and then this is above and beyond, we as the city have done, that provides us additional. So we went based on feedback and everything above and beyond to get more herb, pesticides, you know, whatever, large sides and those types of things done. So this is something, you know, we kinda talked about this, such as other cities do this, they do a vector control charge of whether it's a dollar or something like that a month. So this is maybe something we should think about for our future. But it's gonna get more over time as we have a city expand. Because they, I think based on the contract, we got 20 or 25 grand covered out of the gate. This was the additional off the city paid above that.
I think that's something.
That's correct, Dave.
Yeah, I think it's just something, not to go on with it, but something we'll have to look at in the future to kinda see what our trend lines are, so we can kinda budget that a little bit and make sure we know what's coming.
Talk about it next March?
Yep. Put it on your list.
I will do that, sir.
Alright. Anybody got anything else? Any other questions?
Just a quick question on the Blue Cross Blue Shield. Is that the monthly, or the healthcare costs? Monthly cost, or is that like a quarterly you pay that?
That is every month.
Okay.
You are insuring?
Single.
Five employees, and I added Matea with a dependent. So that's five plus a dependent. And I, I'm going to assume that that, we won't renew again till next August, so that number will be, you can look at it every month, but it will be the same number.
Okay. Alright.
And I, you know, perhaps, I might, I might, I may put that out for bids. I'm not sure yet, I understand that, oh, what's the?
I got Sanford, now I got Medica.
Yeah, Medica. I understand Medica's pulled out of North Dakota though. Is that right?
That I've heard too, so...
So let, I'll put that on my list, we'll probably put that out for bids, probably next May.
Yeah, right.
Doesn't hurt to do that and just see what comes back.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, anything else, otherwise I'll accept the motion.
So moved.
Okay, John?
Second.
Brian does a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, move along. Go to the regular agenda. I'm gonna add Jack in here, we'll have that conversation. Jim, we'll just talk about it.
Okay. We'll put it in, yeah, I added the list as kind of for your information kind of thing, so that's fine, information's there.
We'll add that, well, can we put that on your list?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll start that.
Mayor, what are you adding?
To talk at the discussion.
Look, you're seeing it live, because I'm, he's doing it right on SharePoint, so as he adds stuff, you'll see it, so...
Okay. Basically what, basically what we're doing is we're gonna add, Jack had a discussion, let's see if I've got it. Bubbing able to move into their house over there without the sewer lining.
Prior to, prior to, prior to.
Prior to the sanitary. We'll have a little discussion on that and see where, but we'll get to that, okay? Alright. So, am I the one editing it, or is it you guys editing it?
No, I'm just viewing it, so you'd have to add what you wanted to state there.
So, what are we adding, Corey?
Can you spell it right, John, I apologize. How about that? Okay. Adding that, anybody got anything else you wanna put in there?
No.
Okay. So can I get a motion with that addition?
So moved.
Okay, Dave? Can you get a second?
Second.
Brian does a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, let's go on. John, welcome to Horace for the evening, you're up.
Thanks. The first item we have up is a bond, a bond issue with a state revolving loan fund for the sewer connection project of the city of Fargo. It is being financed through assessments. SRF offers a really good interest rate, it's 2%, so pretty straightforward.
Is this it right here?
Yes. $3,192,000. Pretty straight, very straightforward bond issue through SRF. I can answer any questions.
My only question is, you stated 2%, that's what I thought it was, but in this contract it says one and a half.
Yeah, it's one and a half percent interest rate for the actual loan, and then they charge a .5% for administration.
Okay.
As part of the payments.
So, like, we start the process now when, is it like a three-month deal again to do something like this, or is this quicker, being we're not, being we're going through the state as opposed to going out in the wild for this stuff, I mean, is it just?
You approve it tonight. Once everything's signed, we send it in the state, you can start draws immediately if you want to.
We'll tap quick. And we don't have to start paying this back until March 1st, 2018.
19. We'll get on the 18th roll, will it, John? Or will that get on the?
You'll make your first, you'll make your payment 18, but your first assessments will be 2019.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, like you said, I mean, it is pretty much, this one's a lot easier than some of those other ones, because this just goes through the state. It's pretty much a cut and dry deal.
You're not, you're not gonna find a better interest rate, so...
No. I mean, if we went outside the state and did it, I mean, what are we looking at, four?
Probably 3%.
3%.
3.2.
Still, two, you know, it's, it's still savings, so... Okay, anybody got any other questions on this? I think we can, we can approve this thing tonight, Joe. I don't know if there's any, I see no reason to not do that.
So the, this is just for us to, to approve basically that loan from SRF and then go do their bond sale and that kind of stuff there?
Yeah, what happens is, SRF is a state revolving loan fund, and so they have money that sits in a fund and they loan it out to municipalities. And so they, every year the state does one bond issue and they fund that, but throughout the year they're constantly loaning out money to different political subdivisions.
Okay, got it.
Okay, anybody got anything else? Otherwise I'm gonna look for a motion to accept, and we'll go forward here.
Second.
Brian? Dave?
Second.
Do we need to do a roll call on this one? Alright, John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Alright. Okay.
The second issue is the second reading of your water rate ordinance. It's a very straightforward amendment, as Lucas had probably told you. All you're doing is changing from specifying within the ordinance the water rates to specifying your rates within a resolution. It's nicer to do that, because then you're not always having to go through a first and second reading to adjust your rate.
A little more dynamic and we can adjust a little quicker as things change, so...
So what you're seeing on the screen, anything that has a line through it is being removed and anything that's underlined is being added? Just so everybody who's looking at the screen up there.
Yep. Brian, do you see anything wrong with that one? That's pretty much what it is, so...
I reviewed it. Exactly what we need, the next step is to get the water rates themselves, so...
Yeah, we've been talking about this for a long, long time here now, so...
So, Brian, could you show us the new rates?
Well, this, we're not showing that just yet. This is just to make the ordinance change so that we can approve them via resolution, so I would assume that we'll probably present that next meeting.
Okay.
When do you expect those to go into effect?
I'm sorry?
When do you expect the new rates to go into effect? When are you hoping?
We're talking about potentially January 1st.
January 1st, okay.
So, but there again, it's a bit contingent on getting the water meter project approved and installed and everything, because that's, we need that to be able to read meters.
I'm assuming you need to give at least a two to three month notice.
Absolutely. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's why beginning of November is when I wanna get this out, so that we can have November, December to communicate a public input meeting etcetera, so we can.
Okay.
Start giving a feedback.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions on the water meter ordinance? Otherwise I'm gonna accept the motion to accept. Do the second. Okay, John?
Second.
Dave beat you, Dave got the second.
Alright.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright. Thank you, John. Jim, you're up.
Alright, we'll start with Improvement District 16-3. We have Progressive Estuary number three. Progressive Estuary number three pays for the change order number two. It involved the splitting up of the common services on Long Wall Avenue. So, this change order was approved, this is just the payment part of it. We approved it a couple of meetings ago, and now this is just the processing of that payment. So, if you go down another one, Brian, you'll find the guts of it. So, there's the dollar amount, it's $5,543.83, so... This project, Department of Health was out today, we did a final inspection on it. Everything looked good to them. We just have a couple items remaining, some punchless work by the contractor, and then the final paperwork. So, that's why I asked Brian about the rates. They did ask me when the implementation was gonna be on that, so I...
That's the plan.
Okay, that's what I had thought, so we're on the same page.
Okay.
Okay. We'll go through the, the list, you all have had that for quite a few days now, so...
We have to re-improve this a lot, or is it?
This is pretty much.
Oh, you already did it at the consent agenda, so I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw it and got all the info, so... We'll hit the high points here. Oh, what's changed? Lost River, work continues on grading sidewalks, shared youth paths, dry utilities, streetlights. From what I'm told, if everything holds, the landscapers will be in the end of the week to do some of the seating and some of the landscape work. Sidewalk, sidewalks are coming along real well, and I'd probably say 90% of the sidewalks are done, street paving is done. We're still wait, we're still waiting on the third addition, which is the cul-de-sac Box Elder Circle on the south side. KPH hasn't really given us a real defined schedule on that, within a couple of weeks was their thought, so... Kind of at their mercy at the moment. The connection to Fargo Deer Creek, the pipe was, started fusing last week, I think they're done fusing all that pipe. I did request an update to the schedule for the boring contractor today, I have not received one yet. The indication was that the boring contractor would be in before the, the end of October, and the digging, the open cut portion of it would be started the first part of November. So, there is gonna be tough to meet the completion date. The, we have confirmation from the suppliers that the, all the material will be available, all the material will be delivered to the project, so we won't have any stoppage in work because of that. The control panels for the lift stations have a very long lead time. Apparently Sweeney Controls is quite backed up, they're a couple weeks out on semitels and months out on panels, so that is a bit of a problem, because you need the panels to run the lift stations. So, KPH does have a temporary panel that they've had made that can be used for the Lost River Lift Station when the time comes. We get all the components installed in that, they do have a temporary panel that they can use until the permit panel is built. So, we will be coming at you in two weeks or at your next meeting for probably an extension on that contract through the winter, get it into final completion next year. We do have a verbal from the contractor that he will get Lost River online this year. So, Lost River will be taken care of this year. That was something we addressed at the pre-con, and he was, said there should be any reason why he wouldn't, so...
So they're, they're expecting by the construction completion date to have Lost River connected, or?
Yes, I would say that, that is a yes.
So that would be a first milestone?
Yes, that would be our, our quote first phase.
That's, that's a requirement for this year.
I was told by Eric at KPH that they do have multiple, up to five crews, and if he has the ability, he's gonna put all of them on the job. It's a wide open field, he says as long as the weather holds, he can start stagger them.
You mean after, after going north? Going north?
Yep, for the going north part of it, so... It sounds like he's gonna try to get all the resources he can here to get it done as quickly as he can, so...
Anything else to get out of the ground?
Yeah.
With everything, because once ground freezes up, then we're in trouble.
Yeah, it's tough to compact frozen soil.
Correct.
So Jimmy, he said he had five crews available now, or?
No, he's thinking the first part of November was what I was told, was that they'd free up then, so... If you would go to the, my attachments that I sent you, I did solicit quotes from four contractors for the pedestrian crossing. I received two calls back that they are thanked for the opportunity, but they weren't able to quote on it this year. I didn't receive anything from the fourth, and I did receive this email here from Aspen Excavating asking for an extension until Wednesday. It's up to you guys, but I, I'm kinda thinking we'd be better off just to pull it and we do it in the spring.
This is the crossing, right?
This is the pedestrian crossing up on 17, yeah.
It's not gonna benefit anybody at this point, because very few kids are gonna be walking across here over the winter time and all that, so...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, and, and I should, I should rephrase that, that the two that told me they were unable to bid on now said that if we would hold it, they'd be more, they want to bid on it in the spring, so...
I think we're almost gonna have to do that, because otherwise right now, how many people got backed yet, you know, and?
None. This is the only response, this is the only response that I received, asking for more time.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, I think.
Yeah, my concern is if, if we give, if we give Aspen some extra time here, we don't, you don't meet again for another two weeks, we're that much further behind, and we're really pushing the weather. For concrete work and stuff like that, I think we're really pushing. So, I would say that that would be my recommendation, is we just postpone it and we...
How are we gonna get competitive bids to, if we're only, if we're getting numbers?
Exactly, yeah, yep, yep, yeah. So, like I said, there was indication from the other ones that they would, would, would be willing to bid on it, or provide, provide us with a quote in the spring, so...
Plus if we do this, I would think we look at the speed limit as it comes down, if we move that out, whatever, so it's all coordinated, so next spring we can kind of do it all at once and make that.
We'll have to start having that conversation.
Right, we can put some public interest in there, that kind of stuff, so...
And we'll have to have a discussion with Gas County Roads and make sure that we can, what, what do we need to do on our end to start that process, so we can look at that.
Need a motion or a pull that, or?
I, I don't, do, do we, would we need one? Since I just, I just listed a quote, so...
No, you don't have to take any action.
No, I mean, I'll just respond back and tell them that, thank them for bidding, and that we'll revisit it in the spring, yeah.
Give a little bit more time, do it some, January or February, so they get a little time to think about it and plan.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, so a quick question on the logistics of these, I know these are starting to come, because you're gonna state it about Maple Lane, all of, do you have a list somewhere? Are you keeping a list somewhere so that we can?
Brian's got a, Brian's got a list.
I'll say this is where these are at, so you can make sure we're getting after them?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah, we can, I can modify this thing too, to maybe give you one that's a planning, kind of a planning update versus a construction.
So we know what's coming.
Construction update, so, yeah, I could do that, that's fine. Uh, let's see. Okay, so that's all of that. If you jump to the, Brian, if you could go to the Lost River time extension, we do have a request for a time extension. I didn't receive this in time for the cutoff, so this is kind of a for your information kind of a thing.
Which, which one is it?
Oh, oh, Lost River, what do we call it, a time extension request, or something like that from KPH, it would have been.
These are all the, is this the? Is this it?
Yep, that's the one. This is a letter, they, due to weather, past rain, KPH is looking at extending the completion date of the Lost River project by, I believe it works out to 13 days. I will, like I said, I got this last Thursday, so I missed the cutoff, and I had the chance to review it and go through our notes to see, but I just wanted to present it to you guys, and I'll bring with more information back at our next meeting. But, just to kinda give you an idea, that they are looking at not meeting their November 7th completion date and requesting 13 more days, so... I will bring more information back to you, like I said, I just wanted to get it in front of you, so you have an idea.
Okay.
The next one is the Warren Township one, if you could find that one.
Yep.
We had discussed this letter from Warren Township, this gives regard to the diversion road, that diversion road was dedicated to haul route prior to this project starting. As you can see, there was some, some damage to it, and the township has requested that, that it be placed back to its condition, which it was, or will be, I should say, KPH's willing to do that. The one, old compromise that KPH wanted, they said they'd spread the gravel if the city paid for it. I don't think that's a unreasonable request. It's, it's dedicated haul road, I think the project can pay to put the gravel back on it. Yeah, roughly $5,000, $6,000 worth of gravel, I think that's high, it's, includes placing, he said he'd place it if that's the case. Like I said, this is another FYI type of thing, I'll, I'll...
Would that, so that would fall in the project budget?
Yep.
Because we stated it had to, so there is money in the budget for that?
Yes, yes. And that's not untypical to have a project paid for the haul road, when you're dedic, when you've dedicated that as your haul road, so... I will bring a, probably have to bring a change order back to you for the additional quantity on that, but...
So I'm guessing we should have that gravel down before freeze up?
Yes, and, and that leads me back to the, the schedule for, I talked to Eric about it last week with KPH, and when they do the base work, the gravelling on the Box Elder Circle, that's when he would want to do this at the same time, so...
Okay.
It would, it would be at this year. I got a, the township called me up a week ago, and just wanted to make sure that it, something gets done with it, they wanted, they were having their meeting and they wanted to get it in the minutes that we were talking about it, so I brought it back. Okay, that gets us through this, this, and this. Now we can go to Jack, if you wanna bring his request up, I sent you that. So do you, do you and Rachel wanna talk first, Jack, or do you want?
Yeah, I guess that would be okay.
That's fine.
Go ahead, grab the microphone.
Alright, well, thanks for hearing me on short notice. Apologize for getting the email in late. Rachel's, my wife Rachel's here with me, and I guess if you haven't, please take a moment to read through the email that I sent.
Okay, so you got the stuff that you wanna add on to that?
The one thing that I do want, want you all to know is that the city hasn't accepted any part of this project yet, so technically it's still the contractor's project, so that's why it's important that we get KPH to have some form of agreement or something that they're willing to do it. So, that's why it's important that we get KPH to have some form of agreement or something that they're willing to do it. And that's what we, we didn't have with this. But, I just wanted to get that out that you guys, that they're, it's their project as of right now. We haven't accepted any portion of it, right?
Yeah, so, you know, Rachel and I, we built this house knowing what we were getting into. We knew that the sewer project, the SSL, wasn't scheduled to be done until November of two thousand seventeen. We went ahead with our, our house build anyways. Um, you know, we, our house is old, it was built in eighteen eighty-nine and we've been looking at building for a couple of years. So, we were excited to get going. And, uh, this was actually mentioning to me by Eric at one of the construction meetings, not this last construction meeting, but a couple of meetings ago. Um, he said, why don't you just, you know, plug the manhole and, you know, everything, you know. If you plug them, plug a manhole and just hire a septic hauler, you know, you can get by until the system's operational. And he said, that's what I would do and, and that was actually his idea. Uh, we talked about it Thursday, a week and a half ago at the construction meeting. Rachel actually came to that meeting. She didn't think I would, uh, do a good enough, good enough job, uh, talking to the city engineer, the contractor about moving into her house, but. Anyways, yeah, you know, I think that KPH, uh, I think they'll help us out here. I, I don't think that will be a concern. And so, I guess whatever you're thinking, Jim.
As long as, I don't really have a problem with, with the way it is. I just think there needs to be an agreement in place for, for any of this stuff that's outside. I don't have to talk to the John here quick about, you know, email says what they're willing to do. And, and like I said, we just need to make sure KPH is on, on board with the two. It's not, I don't think there'll be a, a real problem with, with doing it. It's just a matter of they have to be on board with the two and, and we should have some form of agreement.
How about something, how about something like this? I mean, we could approve it contingent upon you, you having a discussion with our attorney and making sure that this is all good.
Absolutely, I mean, that would be.
Is that okay, do a contingent on that and?
Yeah, there's still a couple of things. I mean, we need to make sure the water lines are flushed, talked about that.
They, they aren't yet. That's part of the problem too. I shouldn't say part of the problem, that's part of the process is, um, KPH has filled the lines, they bake the lines. They have to flush a lot of the water lines now and then bacteria test them twice. So, that's probably about a week's worth of work there when he decides to, to test it or flush it. I don't know what the schedule is for that yet, so.
But, at this point, electrical and gas is all hooked up to the properties?
That I don't know, is it, Jack?
Yeah, the secondary line that you were talking about?
Well, we're still waiting for the, uh, the secondary line. That should happen this week from the transmission line to our house. So, that, what I call the transmission line or the line that serves the development is already in. Um, so that just has to be, you know, bored to our gas meter.
Okay.
Right in our house, that short run there. Um, the lines are apparently, uh, filled up and we have electricity to our house. Um, so, as soon as we get the water lines flushed and plug the manhole and get the agreement in place by that point. You know, if we could do that over the next week or two.
Are there any risks looking at, are there any risks that are, is from inspection granting a temporary CO? Before?
I gotta ask, going back to, we haven't accepted it yet. When would we be available to, or when would we be asked to accept it?
Uh, when it's in operation.
We would, we would do that.
Is that, is that this year?
November, maybe middle of November.
So, it will be this year though?
Yes. Well, I guess to get back to my talking with Lost River, that KPH does have temporary pump panels. And the first part that they're gonna do is, is the connection over to a wall area, along the wall, so. I wouldn't have a problem accepting a portion of it if that's something the council would wish and we, we could do that.
Well, there's no damage that can be done. I'm just, hopefully I can say this correctly. If he's gonna work it without it being accepted by us and something happens and then we don't accept it, it's gonna be his dime, right? Does that make sense? And it's gonna cause a problem to your development down the line, correct? So, what risk do we really have right now?
Like I said, I don't know if we do.
That's why I'm just saying the contingent. Russ?
Just as an engineer, I have the concern about, uh, once the water lines are flushed, pass all testing requirements. Is he gonna have enough water for one house to keep this water pure? I don't think any of you can answer that question.
Okay, but you keep, alright, I just wanna ask this question. Cause you're bringing up these questions about how does a development work without X number of houses? Whether it's the sewer, whether it's the water, whether it's what?
This one is at the end of a really long.
I understand that, but what if I put up a development of fifty, for fifty houses and one, one of them sells one year? We offer the services as a city, whether it's casual water, whether it's whatever, we have to provide those services, whether it's one house or fifty.
Yes, you do. And if you got, if you got one house, you're gonna have a, what, inch and a half inch line going out there?
An inch or whatever, right, is a typical?
Inch, uh, inch is, I believe you have inch, inch, inch and a half.
And what are you gonna have here, a mile, a mile of it?
Uh, my, my point is, is whether, you're bringing up points that whether he's doing it right now or after we accept the development are, are the same. It's not because Jack's asking for it right now, it's because we've accepted development and he has put a house out or whoever puts a house at the very end of that run. We can't control that, we can't stop that. We have to provide the services.
I'm not arguing that.
So, doing it now, yes, that's, that's the only difference I'm trying to make. Is that we keep talking about these things, but once we've accepted the development, one house goes up, we have to make sure that it all works as a city. Correct, am I correct in that statement or am I wrong? I'm asking a kind of a question.
You have to be testing on the water, water until you have enough. You as a city are therefore gonna be required to be testing the water until you have enough water for the people want it clear.
Okay, so that would be something we would have to deal with no matter what, right?
I, I don't, I'm not arguing with that.
Right, I, I just wanna make sure I'm.
I'm not bringing this up in planning the zoning, I'm bringing up.
I know, is this?
This is, this area is serviced by Casper Water users. Um, I will get with Brent tomorrow and just see if he has any concerns with it and see what, what they've got on there.
I'm asking the question.
Yep.
I'm sorry, Russ, I'm not trying to.
I, I'll, I'll get with Brent tomorrow and.
I'm asking for their safety.
Yes.
That's fine.
I guess we as a, I would think we as a city would be prepared for this.
It would be no different, you're right.
Not really, at this point, so. Okay, so, what do you guys think then? I'm basically just saying, you know, this is like what he wrote and then contingent upon having that conversation with, uh, Asplun Excavating.
I almost feel it's between Jack and KPH more so than us at this time and point.
Well, you should have some agreement in place because it'll, it'll infrastructurally transfer to the city.
Yep.
I, I'm just thinking like a one, two-page agreement.
Yep.
KPH and Jack and the city just sign off on it. So, everybody's straight about what's gonna happen.
It doesn't work, what's gonna? We're talking about winning.
It's like a month, it's a month and a, you know, maybe it's two-month agreement, so that's what I'm thinking.
Well, we'd start, I mean, we've already started.
The only risk that would be is if for some reason KPH doesn't finish their work before the end of this year and we can't sign off on it. That, that would be the only risk that we would have, right?
Yeah.
The other risk you have is that if the, uh, CO is based on building codes, he may not be able to give you one.
On building codes?
Meaning?
There may require, there may be requirements with the, uh, the CO that will not allow the zoning administrator to grant one. If a house does not have the city's CO. I don't know.
Uh, I don't, what would be the difference from having a pump like Alvin Rivers Edge? You know, if there, if we do the agreement with having it pumped, like, it's almost taint, that's it, right?
Yeah, I mean, here, you have the water and sewer lines already hooked up, so it, I, I get what you're saying. They, uh, usually under the building codes, they can't grant building permits, CO unless they have water and sewer hookups. But here you're gonna have water and sewer hookups. It's just a matter of whether they're fully operational or not.
Right. So, that, that's where a temporary CO would come into play. So, that's, do we, do we put a conditional date on the temporary CO, an expiration on it or something like that?
I'm just asking a question. I don't know what, what you can do, but it's not your day to ask.
Was there anything on the building permit? Any, anything promised on that?
I, I don't know. I agree, it's like Rivers Edge.
Yeah, what else is it done? Everything's done, your house, driveway, sidewalk?
We obtained the temporary CO for the parade.
Right.
And so, the, the things that were remaining were the, you know, water and sewer. But, this would be, uh, this would allow us to move in in, you know, the end of October or November instead of December and January. You know, so that would be. If there, if we, if we felt there were any sort of risks to the system, uh, we've been in our house for eight years, we could live there for a couple of more months. I don't, uh, in speaking with Jim and our engineer Andrew and KPH, um, the risk is to send my basement, you know? So, we're willing to take that risk.
Yeah, and the CO, right, Russ, would be all based on, like you said, is there anything potentially that will be at risk? And if not, we could have, if there is, we have to address it, rather figure it out.
Continency also there?
It is a contingency on that.
He says passes all inspection requirements and obtains a CO or temporary.
I think as long as it's documented on that and the agreement's made on any damage, that we'd have absolutely no expense out of the city funds. I wouldn't have a problem with it.
So, you're thinking it's like a small, short agreement we would assemble between the city and temporary CO with KPH basically?
Yeah, so like I said, I'm okay with that. As long as we do the contingent with that, it should be doing.
Yep, so, I'll make a motion to, I'll make a motion to grant the temporary CO contingent on the items that Jack has listed. Did I state that right?
Yep.
And the agreement.
And, and an agreement drafted between KPH and the city.
And Jack.
And Jack, right. So, who needs to sign, is it all three parties? Who needs to sign that, prove it, okay?
I'll second that.
Okay, John does a second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Jim, that's it then, right?
That's all I had, yeah.
Alright, cool. I'll, Sharon is on her way here, so I'll bump her down on the portfolios. So, Dave, if you wanna go?
Yep.
Okay, I would like to present, just talk about two specific things. Um, the first is not this one that I put up there, but it's the, uh, push or drive for us to do a, um, support on getting a city administrator. Um, after discussion that Brian had with Sharon and others, we feel that we should kind of hold off on looking at having somebody like A two S to help us. That we should review the job description or, or start the process ourselves. So, here's what I would recommend is within two weeks, I will provide a initial job description for the city administrator and allow you guys two weeks to review that, give feedback. Then at that point, we can determine if we feel we are equipped to complete that process ourselves or if we feel we need the assistance of a, of a company such as the U two S to get us through that process. Anybody got a problem with that?
I mean, I guess I could see us starting it. I'm still wondering if we should be going out and having this, having somebody help us with this. This is a bigger deal. I mean, I know what you guys, I don't think we've talked about this and there's two ways.
I can see, I can see both sides. I think, I think us trying to get the job description and trying to make sure we've covered all of the duties and those types of things will be enough for us all to determine, can we do it or should we get assistance?
That is my problem. We can, we need to put that together because we kinda know what we need to do here.
Yep.
So, and I've, I've looked at some of that too, so I mean, you're right, we could probably at least get that list accumulated, the list accumulated. And let's see if we.
List, page, page, page.
Um, and get that figured out and then.
The point is, the point is at this point, we have a draft of a city administrator position, correct? Dave?
She, Sharon has sent me something. I have to just review it and look it with, with, if I see if there's anything I wanna add first and get it in our format and then send it out to everybody.
Where did this come from?
The, what specifically?
Job description she has.
Uh, from my understanding, I believe it was you guys last time, Bob, it hurt. Yeah, that you did last time, but we would review it, need to add to it or just?
I, I don't wanna, I love the way people take initiative on stuff. We, we went around this two years ago and we went back and forth this way and that way and it took forever. It's a long process to do and it's, we're not, I'm not qualified for a job description for this. I, I'm looking at the breakdown that was proposed. They do this. I don't know why we wouldn't take advantage of this and move the ball rolling. We're still gonna have to go through the process with them on the interview and all, all the other fun things that go along with it. It's gonna take time, it's gonna take process. And I think this is something that they can really get the ball rolling, get a jump on it. We went before and it, it went a lot of input and then it goes back again, more input, goes back and forth. I don't think it was a great experience before, in all honesty. I don't mean to put Vance on the spot with it, but he, yeah.
We know that.
So, we're talking about in October because our budget, again, remember, our budget didn't have it until April of next year. So, we don't have money in the budget for it till quote-unquote April. If we feel we have to bring that forward, then we gotta go find money somewhere, so. That is quote-unquote five and a half months from now.
So, you think if we started this with us doing it, that we'll still meet that timeframe?
Yeah, I do.
Okay.
But that means I'll get it done in two weeks. You guys have two weeks. At that point, we make a decision.
Okay.
And if not, we at least have a job description and we either go forward or we say no, A two S, we need your help and.
Hearing the success of talking with, uh, I said her name earlier, Katie Anderson. And the recommendation that they, she talked about, it was just such an easy deal. And the right, the right way they did it.
Do you have a strong opinion on that or the other on this, that we've talked kind of?
I, my, my only assertion is we don't have time to do this and I, I would prefer not to wait any longer. But, cause I mean, I don't know what should or shouldn't be in a job description like this. To John's point, I'm not qualified to say what should be there. If there's precedent that we can lean on, that they have done this and it's an HR person, we don't have an HR person, I mean. But, there again, it, it comes down to it's allocating funds to hire somebody to go do this for us versus us trying to do this ourselves.
Okay, then let's take this.
We, we could say we could do it ourselves, but if we don't feel we're qualified to do it and how much time is it gonna take from us to go do this? And we, time is a premium for us.
Well, you could put something great together, wouldn't we even know if it's great or not? That's.
All we would do is we'd have to list, we'd have to base it upon what other municipalities have done. Cause that's what I went and gleaned when I was looking at this. What are, what are they looking for? And do they show, does that community been in a growth pattern? That somebody would get into that type of situation? That's what I was looking for when I went out looking at that.
Okay, then let's take this approach is I will bring up the, that, that you have up there, John, the, the proposal.
Okay.
Because we kinda have varying opinions next meeting for review, but in the meantime, we'll start on the job description. So, next meeting we will review the proposal and we'll either say a hearing.
Okay.
Good enough.
It's just, all I wanna make sure is that we hit this thing up on April one, somebody's in the seat.
Yep.
Okay.
Alright, that's where I'm at too.
Yes, I mean, that's however we get their mind.
This is a priority, so.
April one, yep, alright.
And if we have to take some of the funds out of next year's, what we would normally pay this person to, you know, if, if that first three months is what we would have budgeted for a full year salary, to take some of that money to, for the hiring and recruiting, so be it.
Okay.
Okay.
That would, that would be a good use of those funds to get a highly qualified person because we, like, I would, I would prefer that we find the right candidate that could be our city administrator for ten plus years.
Okay.
So.
Any other questions on that? We'll do them, we'll present it in the next meeting.
Let's go that road, we'll talk about.
Okay. Alright, uh, what you have on the screen right here is a, um, proposal that was brought by the county assessor for them to do the, uh, assessments for the city of Porus. Um, basically what it is, is a breakdown into a three-year agreement. It is a, at a cost of seventeen thousand, seven hundred dollars per year base and then a fee on number five there per parcel that they do. Okay? You run those numbers. You run those numbers, even if you say we do fifty houses plus a couple commercial, whatever, it's about twenty grand a year. I don't think we can find an assessor anywhere, twenty thousand dollars. So.
We've gone through this.
Yes. The other benefit to this is when they do an appraise, uh, not appraisal, sorry, an assess or review of, of a property, it goes into their system online with all the pictures with everything that is public and available.
The process that they're following is their own process.
Their own process, yes.
Can't, can't get any better than that.
Yep. So.
We would have to train somebody on how to do that.
Correct. We would have, you know, they take care of it. We just call up when a, when a property is sold or anything like that, they will come out, take care of it, do a work.
No, that's what we do.
The only, um, item related to this that is not in this contract is to fully execute this, they have requested that there will be a full reappraisal or reevaluation of all lots in our city. That is something they would hire Vanguard to do. They've stated they could start this year, late this year. They feel it will take over a year to complete. Um, that is about, at a, at an estimate of about two hundred thousand dollars. CAS, County of, uh, CAS County will pay for a hundred thousand of that or fifty percent. We are required to pay the other fifty percent, but we get to pay the payments over five years. So we can budget for that.
Yep, that will.
Okay?
Question is that, is that a requirement anyway? I mean, just by the fact that we're.
Yes, it's one of those situations that either we're gonna have to do it.
We can't start anymore.
No, that's correct.
We're not required to do it.
Right, either if we do, if we hire somebody, sooner or later, the state is gonna come back to us and force us to do this. So either we will have to hire somebody and that will have to be their objective over a period of time, or they will take care of it.
Is this accelerating that?
Yes, it's accelerating a little bit.
But we're getting ahead of it so we don't get nasty letters.
Well, but we're gonna get nasty letters anyway.
Correct.
We're overdue on this.
I get it. Look, we're, we're gonna be right back where West Harte was two years ago.
So your choice is this, is you pay.
Yeah, I'd like, yeah, we're, we're gonna be, we're gonna be crucified.
Your options are you pay this, which is gonna be a lot less, and then somewhere in the range of twenty thousand dollars over five years, which then comes out to be forty thousand, forty-five thousand dollars a year, we cannot find an assessor for no less than fifty to fifty-five thousand. So.
I, I have no problem with the price. It's absolutely the right thing to do. I'm just, it's gonna hurt. This one's gonna hurt.
Oh, yeah. We're gonna be, it's gonna hurt in one year, I agree with you, but we are gonna be forced to do it at some point and it will take us a period of years to do it, maybe two or three.
I know.
But we have to do it at some point as a cities.
You know, we know.
Will we, can?
Sooner or later, the state is going to force us. Yeah. Whether we like it or not.
I don't know a plan B with us.
I know, that's why I'm like, I would stretch this out in a longer period of time. I don't, never mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um. I would hope that this board would accept this contract.
We're just talking, trying to make sure we get it all out.
I understand that, but, uh, CAS County is doing the same thing for several other communities in Cas, in rural CAS County. And we're kind of the last holdout and I can't, as Dave said, you can't hire.
I know.
Anyone.
I, yeah, I don't.
And Dave and I have had two or three meetings with Paul. We've gone all through this and we like it. And that's all I have to say on the matter.
Yes, Brian, there is a downside to this is that this will affect most of our residents at some point. It's just, will it affect over about a year or so, or will we push it out for a few years, but.
So do we need to make a motion to?
Yeah, we either have to accept it or not accept it.
Okay, yeah, so let's get on that.
We'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, Brian makes a motion to approve. Give a second.
Oh, second.
Okay, John does a second.
Dave, Mr. Shevish, over there.
All right.
I'm not gonna. A second's not my problem.
All right, we gotta roll call this one. John?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
Okay, there we go.
It's the right thing to do.
Get her down.
I agree.
Good.
You just had to vent a little bit. You're all right now, okay?
No, I'm not all right.
All right.
There is a little bit of dissension at the office of Paul. They had one of their major guys quit.
Oh, did they?
Issues going on there too, so.
But that's not.
Doesn't it do with what we're talking about tonight?
But that, that's, it basically becomes a contract with them.
It could be.
We're expecting them to provide someone. It doesn't matter who it is. It's part of their contract to provide someone and provide the service to us.
So we're good. All right. Okay, Brian, or Dave, you got any more?
No.
That was it.
Great.
Brian, what do you got?
Uh, no, my two actual items were already discussed, so I don't have anything else to add.
Awesome. John?
I'm your reporter.
All right, so I'll give my little update here. Couple things. Uh, we did the Envision Horus meeting last Monday. The two people show up. I expected that. I mean, it's, this is a tough time of the year. You got a lot of concerts. You got a lot of activities at school. I got it. But it was okay to start having these conversations again because we did get, um, a few more things talked about. Uh, we showed what we were thinking about doing, you know, and had that conversation, uh, with that new development or new ideas, I shouldn't say it, new ideas that we had come up with. Um, so we're gonna try and have another one here next month. We'll try and get a couple of these going again. And then I'm probably gonna have Brent show up for one of these, but I'll give him plenty of heads up so he can be here for it. Cause we've got a couple of things I'd like to go over with that.
Uh, Cory?
Yes, sir.
John, if I could ask you a question. Are these envisioned meetings considered special meetings? Do we have to publish and notify the media and all that?
Do you, are you, does the whole council there?
I don't know.
Not always, no. In fact, I don't think there has been for, just that first time.
I've never been to one. Basically, one other person, another Cory. That's the point.
If it's only one other person than Cory and it's not a true, like, you didn't tell me.
But how do I know if they're all gonna show up or not?
We'll, we'll talk about it ahead of time to see if we're gonna be there and make sure that we don't have Cory.
Cause I don't wanna get into an issue with this open meeting law thing.
Yeah, as long as there's not a Cory present and it's not, I mean, you just gotta make sure that you don't have more than a majority of the council showing up to that.
And that's kind of cool too, Cory, is to give her feedback.
Yep. So, we'll take care of that. Okay? Um, so anyway, we'll just have those ongoing meetings. Um, was gonna, John, you already know about this, but I was gonna, you and I talked about this earlier today about the diversion discussion. Okay. Um, you guys know that the diversion is kind of back in play again. Okay? I'm wondering if we need to send a note or send a letter to Doug on behalf of the city here, um, basically stating that we'd like the diversion to kind of stay where it is and not move any further north. I don't know if it'll ever come up in a conversation.
It has.
Okay, it has. Okay, I don't want it coming any further north. It's kind of.
Well, do we send that to state and the diversion authority?
It would be bad to send it out to everybody, even send, even send it to Governor Dayton.
So basically us going on record saying this is, we're opposed to.
Well, just, I don't wanna. I wanna stay opposed, just stay preferred.
Yeah, we don't want.
It's gonna be Wilkin and Ransum counties, you know, that are gonna bring it up and this study's been done, beaten down. It makes no sense to move it north, but the conversation will come out again. And we just need to make sure, I, you're talking to Cory, that we put it out to everybody else.
It's just basically a letter stating that the city would, uh, wants to keep the.
It doesn't hurt anything.
No.
I mean, we're not stating any.
No, I've sent it something. Yeah. Putting, putting statement on notice that if it does move north, it dramatically affects us even more than it does right now.
Correct.
So we wanna have that.
The exception is just not worth it. The, the millions that they're gonna spend, it just makes no sense.
Yeah, I will proceed there, but if you guys wanna do that, I can draft up a letter and we'll go start that. Okay?
Absolutely.
It's a precaution.
Yeah, it is. That's all it is. It's just, I wanna make sure, cause the word, we explain what's going on. Okay? I don't know if I need to do a, we got it figured out here. I'll write a letter.
That's not a, what were you calling it?
A resolution.
Resolution or anything. I don't think that's.
Not really what we wanna do. Just send a letter where we're at.
Yep.
What we're thinking. Sure? Okay, so a couple of other things, a couple of other things I was gonna talk about. I'm gonna, I'm going to that conference in Vismark. If one of you guys wanna go along, it's that one I was talking about, the Disrupt North Dakota, where they're gonna have all this, um, basically, they're almost gonna do like a Shark Tank with some new ideas and stuff like that. And they're gonna be going through that along with a bunch of speakers and talking about the future of medical, future of oil development, future of transportation. And they got one other one I'm drawing up like here. But anyway, there's four different things they're gonna be talking about along with, uh, these presenters. That's on October thirty-first. I'll probably be going, I'll go over thirtieth, stay overnight and go to the meeting. So if anybody's interested, uh, let me know or let Vance know.
I can, I can echo, so.
Okay. And the second one is they got a, John, you saw that. We sent that to you today about the.
I got your ticket already.
Okay, whatever, then we won't worry about it.
He's got what? What did he say?
He's got his ticket already. What they're doing, um, the metro, um.
Exit issues.
Yeah, Chamber is putting together exit issues thing, but they're gonna be talking about economic development going on around the metro area here. I wanna start participating in some of that stuff so we kinda get a, we can get our ear in what's going on here with, uh, as far as economic development along the corridor. I wanna try and bring some of that down in the south corridor, at least get those conversations started. So I'll sit in on that one and kinda see what they've, what they're coming up with there. What was the other thing I was gonna mention about that? That would go in, I guess. Okay, Sharon, I left you until last because I knew you were on your way.
Cory?
Yes, sir.
Just one thing before.
Go.
Before we get off your agenda, the minutes to reflect, um, that you and I would send a letter to, uh.
We do need to do that.
Is that still something you want to look at?
Yeah. I don't know. When do you have time to?
Put that in the minutes to.
Yeah. Let's do, let's try and get that done this week. I've got some little more time this week than next. Okay? Okay.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, a couple of things. Figure out what order to them. I have a, I spoke with Jason Benson approximately, I don't know. I speak with him a lot, so we were talking about the diversion and having Horus, uh, get a seat on that diversion committee and Jason said he was going to bring that up, so I just need to follow up with him and find out where that stands. He thought it was a good idea and saw no reason why we shouldn't be involved in that process now, so. I'll let you know as soon as I, I'll follow up with him tomorrow and see if he's got an update on that.
Good. Okay.
There was a grant that you would just give me that letter, the transportation grant. We're going to put it in this year with respect to the, that shared use path we were thinking about along the rail corridor, because there is within that the ability to purchase the land and that would be, that would be huge. Cause right now, that's the big obstacle, the two hundred plus thousand dollars for that. So that's gonna be the direction we wanna go. So, John, I'll visit with you.
As I say, we'll have to sit down and, and see how, what we wanna proceed with along there.
Yep.
Yeah, cause we've got, we did, uh, I had a ballpark, uh, assessment there from a realtor. We had the price from being NSF, what they were looking for that land. We know the, the amount of acreage. It's like seven, like, cut acres and so.
How wide is needed?
Well, I think they, we were talking about like a ten foot. You know, that's typically what they are, is about ten foot wide. But the track that they, I mean, their track is really, I don't know how wide it is. The, the map's really tiny, but it's, you know, it looks like this. It's just small. Cause then even there's some.
Well, BSNF owns.
Yeah.
It's a hundred feet. Right wide, yeah.
You own some of that, don't you, John?
Well, yeah.
Cause it jogs in a little bit around, behind your property.
Right, so it'd be fifty. You know, I know the one side that Catholics own and they were buying it and I don't know if they went through with the purchase of that or not, but it's, there's still fifty. And some of us have already developed part of it, so.
Yeah, we have the whole map.
Fifty available.
We have the whole map of what's available from being NSF. Cause they wanted us to move forward and purchase that property by the end of the year, but, I mean.
And that's fun.
I don't know that that's gonna happen by the end of this year. It's a lot of money, but.
Those applications are due to MetroCog. I think it's the second or third of December.
Yes.
It has to go through your Metropolitan Council and then they recommend, they rank them and send them, submit them to the DOT who administers the program.
And so last year when we submitted it and the year before we submitted, so they're, they're familiar with us now and.
Here they go again.
We're just changing, we're just changing projects this year.